All right. Recording in progress.
Okay, um, all right, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, we're in the, uh, Jefferson City Council Chambers, uh, Yvonne, can you call roll?
Yes, George.
Here.
Buckles.
Present.
McElroy.
Here.
Hebert.
Here.
Hodgins.
Here.
Houston.
Present.
Flynn is absent tonight.
All right, uh, stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, looks like we have an amended agenda. Believe it was just, um, six stacks for the item that was added. Yeah, just, yeah, just that. Uh, any other, anything else, any other changes?
What is that, I am?
Oh, yeah, um, it is a addendum to sewer main lighting project.
Thank you.
Is this available online?
Not that, not doing that.
Okay, um, so next we have the public comment. I have a public comment form from, uh, Robert Davis, do you want to come up? Okay, you can stay there, either way. Is it, yeah.
I'm Robert Davis, and I'm here under the American Legion. And we have a request for grant, um, to extend our food program. We are at approximately 100 people, book on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We're giving out, we're now at the point of giving out a snack for the kids who's had, as well as a full hot meal, for them to take with them, um, that way they have something.
Liz, you might, you might be real quick.
Can she hear?
I think so. Sorry, go ahead.
Um, we're trying to, we're trying to add another meal. And the most expensive part of it actually is a paper product. You're paying roughly thirty some, thirty seven to third, to forty two, um, per hot meal to go, the square ones. We have smaller ones, we have little large ones. But to purchase that, I purchase it out of my money. I purchase a lot of stuff out of my money. We don't have a whole bunch of funding, okay, we have no funding. We, and we managed to make it work, we get food, um, now from one of the colleges, Linfield. They bring us food every Friday, and it's the food from the dining hall that the kids didn't eat. So they pack it up, put in the freezer, and give it to us, which is amazing because it allows us to feed a lot more people, and gives them a choice too. You never get any complaints about the food. But, um, with the winter coming and the fact that they really need more, more calories, and they try to give them as much calories as they can, but they really need to put another meal that they can, they can come in, so we're gonna extend their hours, um, to five thirty, so people coming home from work or people coming over can get a meal, a dinner, and take it home with them. This is important. We start, we started with this program, serving veterans. And they used to hang out and, you know, enjoy each other's company. It's now turned, then we, then we started getting elderly people because food stamps and a thousand dollars, nine hundred dollars a month for social security is not gonna cut it. So a lot of them were missing meals. So we have that, and we send them extra food. Then we added, we added kids, family. The summer, we actually had kids coming in for a bag lunch, because they knew they were there, and there wasn't a whole lot of food at home, so they asked if they could have some lunch. We've now started doing, we get those kids, a lot of times we get the kids coming out of school. There's no snacks at home, there's no food at home, they should, at the end of the month, they're really desperate. The fact that, um, the food bank can't give them all the money for the food they used to get. They're getting a pitiful amount of money for the food, and they, they had to switch down to twice a month. You've got people that are relying on this. These are not people that are lazy, people have jobs. One woman, she takes care of her grandkids, she has place to live, but there's five of them. So she comes in right before they get out of school, she takes bag lunches for them to eat right away, and then we spend her a larger portion of food. And we've just gone through, yes, we do have some homeless people. They do work for me around the place, they just love cleaning up and folding and going through some of the donations. But, I'm having a hard time up here.
You're doing good.
My, my, my hundred percent is PTSD. But, so we really could use the help with the bag, the containers. I do most of them, we don't, I don't pay for bread, see, I don't pay for bread, I... Okay, I don't pay for bread. Everything else in the bag lunches I pay for. And if you want some good chips, the one ounce bag is now forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. You get a hundred and three of them. We get them about every week, because they're just going too fast. But we try, as an American Legion, we have, we have one line, part of, part of our, our oath, is that we help, any way possible, our community, our state, our nation. And that's what I believe in. And right now, this American Legion is focused not just on our veterans coming through and what they need, but also focusing on the community. We did the police station, um, we ate the, we ate the additional use of the electric we add because it gets expensive. And we were running that all the time. We have more heat going now because people coming in for lunches. A lot of them are just coming in, because of the work in the air, people are nice, and there's not judgment, and... But that plays an important role. And besides which, unless we reach my tenant that I have to help. We are now, you have a citizen in this town that has to clean his yard. And he isn't able to do that physically, he's unable to do that, he's a veteran. So once he gets paperwork from, and then he put in this request, came all the way from Salem, the vet center. And he's terrified because if he can't get it cleaned, which he can't, he's gonna have to pay to have it cleaned, I'd say. This man can't afford it, it's just not gonna happen. So we get rounded up a team of people, and we're going to go and clean his yard. This is what we do. We're not a scary first place, people find it very safe. And we're doing what the, the American Legion tells us to do, which is help the, the community. And your community needs a lot of help as far as food goes. I mean, and we're not even talking about the people on the streets. We're talking about veterans, these older veterans, we've had to deliver food to them, they can't come and get anything. When they come in for food bank, we usually have food and meals that we put with everybody who comes into food bank. And that's about a hundred and twenty. The veteran, the agent's staying very busy. And, you know, I'm, I'm personally running out of money to be able to afford to pay this all the time. You know, um, you know, when you pay with credit card, and then you figure out how to pay it, pay the credit card. But this program needs to continue. For so many people, it's, it's vital. We've had more than one person come in, and they're in the community, they're not homeless. And they haven't eaten, it's been two days. We pop, sit them down, and, and we always have coffee, nothing helps anything other than as good as a cup of coffee. We go through a lot of coffee. And we usually, you know, and cookies, or pastries, or fruit, we give out, anytime somebody gives us food, you know, food. We got strawberries and protein, banana bread, I either out there making banana bread, or we put it on the tables, and people can come and grab stuff. The biggest recall, the biggest request, oh, request actually is peanut butter. They get bread, they're not gonna put on it. We've given, we, anytime we get fruit, we make jam, that way we can set them at least with some jam. But this is, this is something that the city should back. Now, it's citizens, and you wouldn't believe who the citizens are. No, they're not the, I mean, we've even worked with Churches United and sending people for the showers. So every Thursday, um, it's gonna be Lutheran as showers. We've helped supply some of the clothes, you know, because there's nothing as good as a shower. And when they go for a week without showers or two weeks, we send them to have a shower. And then again, they also get cleaned by, and they pick up clean clothes, which is what Dorothy has. And it's off to the shower they go. That way, when they're nice and clean, they put clean clothes on. I mean, you wouldn't put your dirty clothes back on, you wouldn't even wear the dirty clothes they got. But we are trying, and we are, we are addressing the issue. It's always been an issue in this city, and we're trying to kind of work with it possible. That's all I have, sorry.
No, no, thank you, thank you for, thank you, yeah, coming up here and talking to us.
Thank you, Bobby, for sharing with us. Thank you for taking care of our community and helping us take care of them. We'll get them all started away someday. Now, I'm living on the mindset, so I'm doing all this for Sheridan.
Okay. Don't think we have sheriff here. I'm sorry, deputy here in the sheriff's office, um, but, we have a report. Any comments or questions? Jim, go ahead.
I didn't see anything really bad here, except, you know, follow up was higher numbers. That's a good thing to come up on the things that they do. I did notice fifty-four traffic stops, which is wonderful. Because we do see a lot of, I think, if you walk around here, you see a lot of people that should be aware of what the speed limit is. So, uh, it looks like you're, you're doing well there, but other than that, it seems unremarkable.
Has anyone looked into if there's been any difference since we've put in the signs with traffic violations for, for cutting the speed? It would be interesting to look into, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I think we have.
Okay, I'll, I'll bunk around.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, it'd be good to know, especially like, we're on the Jefferson, the Jefferson stuff, but we just go fly out there. Anything else on that?
Yeah, Your Honor, I could mention, I, I, uh, did talk to Captain Lethal and Sergeant Stover. We really did wanna have somebody here tonight, you know, but it's, uh, again, if they're called away, they got something going. That's still the reason why I can think of a county here, it's a more important issue.
Go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Can you discuss it first, or you're gonna make a motion, then discuss it, please?
That's up to everybody else.
Well, then, I'll start out, and we can have a discussion. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as given, with the exception as we discuss it.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, this is just, uh, there's no any stuff that stood out. On page twelve ninety-two, or page four seven within minutes, uh, second from the bottom paragraph. I've developed a new warrant, I think, April, the warrant class, I'm pretty sure that's, I'm pretty sure that's April.
Let's not spell check those.
Well, this is where it's.
They spell right. What page was that, Jim?
Page twelve ninety-two, or page four seven within minutes. I'll move on to the, I didn't find anything else in the minutes. Go ahead and move on to, uh, the Spencer Report, which, hmm. This month, I actually was lucky, unlucky enough to have, not have to be able to actually sign all of these checks. I did a little write a scrap, but, uh, I was watching very closely. Any question that I had, Omega had answers for. I did not see anything that was outrageously wrong, or, uh, that shouldn't have been that way. And I thought I had highlighted it, I did. That's not the right one, Greg, you can. There is one bill that's, uh, going away, uh, because of our new computers and our new phones. Find it. Go ahead and tell me, Omega, what bill is going away, because I didn't highlight it. Is it the Land Pod Connect?
Yes.
Excellent. And this month, that was five hundred and ninety dollars a week. Every five hundred, every ninety-two dollars is five hundred and two more dollars we did have, of course. That's, that one more bill from them, then we're done with them. Uh, other than that, that's about all I have to say. We did spend a bunch of money, but it seemed to be all accounted for well, and it wasn't for anything that I found.
Any other discussion on that? Uh, well, okay, um, we'll go ahead and vote then, um, all in favor? Okay. All right. Okay. Next, we have, um, public hearings. Yeah, I'm turning it right.
Oh, yeah, um, I don't know if it's Yvonne or Omega, the page numbers did get on the agenda. It was a little challenging on that round, but just.
You spoiled us, you spoiled us, and we wanna pass it.
That's what I'm doing, great work before, but that isn't. I think it does, yeah. Oh, yeah, starting a public hearing, yeah, it's gonna have to. Okay, um, so we'll go ahead and open, um, open up for a public hearing regarding ordinance, um, did I say more ordinance?
Yeah.
Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh five and twenty twenty-five dash oh six. Do we have, um, anyone to speak in favor, is that the first one? Yeah, anybody to speak in favor of, is there ordinance from, from the public? I don't think there's anybody here.
Not much.
Um, okay, uh, any members of the public who are opposed? Okay, uh, any members, um, either for or against? Okay. Anything else before I close it? Yeah, okay. Okay, um, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on these two ordinances, it is seven twenty. Uh, okay, now, I guess, uh, if someone would like to make a motion to. Read an ordinance, yeah. Okay, Jim.
I move to read ordinance twenty twenty-five zero five, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four point four eight zero of the shared municipal code relating to water rates and charges to be read by title only. First.
A second.
Second, okay.
I'll make it for this one.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
I would like to just say, this, now is a good time to let anybody that might be either listening in or watching later. This isn't stuff we want to do, and we start raising rates, it's something that needs to be done if we wanna have a system that works. And nobody likes to pay more bills, but if we wanna have a, a water system, a sewer system, it has to remain available, and by raising these rates as, as slow as we can, uh, it saves a big change later when, uh, if we suddenly run out of money and we have to start raising it, like eight, ten percent, which would really hurt a lot more. So, the three percent we're proposing isn't, isn't something we want to do, it just needs to be done if we wanna maintain our water sewer system.
Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead.
I would just let my support to this as well, and I would just, you know, tell the public, this is, uh, what I believe that, I believe this is what the public has asked us to do, is to be fiscally conservative and careful with our money, and to make sure that the city maintains the runs, and I love that they're doing this, so, that's all.
Yeah, Your Honor, and you might recall, uh, our rate analyst for thirty years, Steve Donovan, was honored by the council back in, uh, July court session, or was it June?
Earlier.
Yeah, in the summer. And, uh, and his presentation is basically attached in the packet, if you wanted to review of it. But basically, uh, the council has been very conservative over the years, for thirty years, just trying to keep up with inflation and not have these spikes, uh, uh, or valleys in, in rates. And, and that's been enough, it's been enough to deal with our, uh, long term, up to ten years, our, our infrastructure needs, up to ten years. So, uh, Steve Donovan has guided us all those decades, the council's fallen suit, and, uh, this is just the thirtieth year of desperately keeping up inflation, and that's all we need. And if I could add one more thing, the, uh, the actual rate increase will hit people in their February bill. You get billed for January's charges in February, you get your bill for it. So, uh, when the ordinance says the rate's going to a flat, it'll January's service, you can bill for that in February. That's the timing, that's why it's always been important.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
If anybody is interested in why we're doing this, uh, you could go online and look at the packet, the, uh, PowerPoint presentation that Steve Donovan presented, it's right there, available for everyone to see. And you'll see the Sheridan stays in the lowest third for all the cities around us, including Salem, which is now in Yamal County. So, uh, we're doing the best we can to keep the prices low, and, uh, I know a lot of people aren't happy with the prices. If you wanna be able to have water and flush your toilet, this is what we've got to do.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, uh, then, vote by show of hands on this first reading?
Uh, actually, Your Honor, um, so, you, uh, uh, you don't vote on the ordinance at this point? That comes back next month for both of these ordinances?
No, we do, and we have two readings.
Yeah, we're voting on the reading, we're voting on the reading.
Voting on the reading?
Yes.
But not the ordinance itself?
That's correct.
Well, we adopt the first two readings because we have to do that.
So, so, vote, voting to approve the reading?
So, yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so, voting by show of hands, uh, to approve the reading. All in favor? Okay, that was unanimous, all right. Uh, go ahead.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four point four eight zero of the shared municipal code relating to water rates and charges.
Okay. Good. I move to accept the first reading and adopt. Oh, that's not quite right. I moved to accept the first reading, yeah, for adoption of ordinance twenty five five. We're not adopting, they were, they're accepting the readings.
Yeah. Okay, first and second, um, any other discussion on the reading? All right, uh, Yvonne, can you call roll?
Buckles.
Yes.
McElroy.
Yes.
Hebert. Hodgins.
All right, yes.
Houston. And Counselor Flynn is absent.
Okay, uh, would someone like to make a motion to read it for the second time by title only?
I move to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five for the second time by title only.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, first and a second. Any discussion on this for the second reading? Okay, uh, all right, vote by show of hands to approve the reading, uh, all in favor? Okay, I think that's, yeah, that's unanimous, okay.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four point four eight zero of the shared municipal code relating to water rates and charges.
Motion to approve the reading. Yeah, go ahead.
I move to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero five.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Okay, Yvonne?
Buckles.
Aye.
McElroy.
Yes.
Hebert. Hodgins.
Yes.
Houston.
Yes.
And Flynn is absent.
Okay, uh, third reading, uh, will take place at next regular meeting. And now, we get to do this again. New, uh, with a new ordinance. Jim, go ahead.
I move to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point twelve point two six zero of the chairman's code relating to sewer use charges to be read by title only.
All right, first and a second, any discussion on this? Okay. Vote by show of hands to approve the motion. Uh, all favor, hands up. All right, that's unanimous.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six, and ordinance amending chapter thirteen point twelve point. Last time I said whatever. Thirteen point twelve point two six zero, the municipal code relating to sewer user charges.
I move to accept the first reading and, and adopt. I move to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero six by title only.
Okay, first and a second, any discussion? Okay. Uh, Yvonne, can you, uh, take a roll call vote?
Yes, Buckles.
Aye.
McElroy.
Yes.
Hebert. Hodgins.
Yes.
Houston.
Yes.
And Flynn is absent.
Okay, Jim?
I move to read ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six for the second time by title only.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, uh, vote by show of hands. Okay.
Lucy, did you vote?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Is that one unanimous?
Yeah. Oh, I, I, I didn't think about this, sorry.
Somebody else.
I move to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, uh, Yvonne?
Buckles.
Aye.
McElroy.
Yes.
Hebert. Hodgins.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Houston.
Yes.
Flynn is absent.
We do that, right?
I don't think I actually read.
I don't think he read it. I was just saying like.
I'll just, I'll just read it, and then we'll consider the vote as already happened.
Yeah.
Um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero six, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point twelve point two sixty of the shared municipal code relating to sewer user charges. I would have said something sooner, but I really wasn't sure, and I didn't want to.
I was in the same boat.
That foolish.
Certainly in a blur.
I think I got the script, but I think I, oh, yeah, I thought something was missing, but I wasn't for sure. But, okay, well, uh, the third, we'll have two third, uh, two readings, or the third time, there you go, next month for both of those. Um. This is the third time there? Yeah.
Third reading for, uh.
Okay, more, okay, so now we're on to action, action items, um, for adopting ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh four, and this is the third reading, um, to remove the, the water deposits, water. So, um, okay, Jim?
I move to read ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four of the shared municipal code relating to water account deposits by title only.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Yeah, uh, okay, uh, vote by show of hands, all in favor? Okay, alright, uh, Tyler, would you, uh, please read this one?
Ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four of the shared municipal code relating to water account deposits.
Jim? This is the one that you're trying to get me to read, um, I move to accept the reading and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five zero four.
Discussion? Nope, okay, um, Ivan, can you, uh, give a roll call vote?
Yes, Houston.
Present.
Hodgins. Throwing you off, Liz?
Now you're reading.
Uh-oh, she's reading. We'll come back to you, Liz. Hebert?
Right.
McElroy?
Yes.
Buckles?
Aye.
And Liz?
Hodgins?
Sarah might go unmuted for a second.
Whatever you were doing before, Liz, it was the right thing to do, go after that.
You can also.
Oh.
There we go.
You can also raise your hand. I'll take that as a yes, or a aye. Okay. Okay, so that, uh, that one's then.
Done.
Done, yeah, okay. Okay, we normally don't have that many reasons, um, okay, uh, so next, the second action item, uh, SEDCOR engagement letter. And, uh, that's on page sixty seven and sixty eight. Jim?
I think it's very good for the city to be working with SEDCOR, but what I don't, this letter is a little nebulous about how much we want to pay them. We've got our choice of the flat rate of nine thousand dollars for a rate of a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. If we pay them a hundred and eighty thou- dollars an hour, if they were fifty hours, we put the nine thousand rate and we're even. If they go over fifty hours and we're still paying them, we're not doing well. However, if we go with the flat rate of nine thousand dollars and they don't manage to do at least fifty hours in a year, then we have overpaid them. That's, I don't have a, a good selection for that, I think, to say, we should be aware of that and then probably decide what we want to pay them or how we want to pay them.
Uh, your honor, I can offer some clarification on that. What this letter tries to set up is, uh, is a, an annual service based on a lot of activity. Which, we're not going to be close to that the first year, which is the current year. But, uh, if it was a very active year, then these different amounts, uh, could kick in, uh, to, to meet that amount of activity. It's all based on the billable rate of a hundred and eighty dollars an hour. So, trying to just break it down into, uh, the, uh, uh, the enterprise zone split, uh, this year, not so much. Business retention and expansion services, looking at about nine thousand, you know, fifty hours being, uh, a, a, a good amount of activity. What this also doesn't include is, is another amount for other business services, uh, which would be, again, be a hundred and eighty dollars a year. But, uh, uh, this could be other business related things. So, you're, you're talking about thirty to thirty-five thousand a year with a, with a full year of very active, uh, activity. This year, first year, you're probably looking at not even a third of that, you know, or maybe about a third, ten, ten to twelve thousand possibly, for this, the rest of this calendar year. So, I asked them to put a letter together based on a, a, an annual service of a fairly robust activity. So this, what these amounts would really pertain to, uh, Jim, is more of like a maximum, you know? If these things, uh, went way beyond that, I think that would be a great thing.
Yes.
So we'd come back to the council and say, we need more money for this contract. I mean, I could approve some, you know, but if there was a big change, we'd come back to the council. So bottom line, a real active program is going to be about thirty, thirty-five thousand a year. This year, we're probably looking at about ten to twelve.
So in, in your opinion, are we, when we make the motion, are we going to say, we're going to allow them to build a flat rate, already rate of a hundred and eighty dollars an hour, which you believe is to our advantage at this time?
Well, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's nearly all going to be costed to us in an invoice based on hourly rate of that. So, the flat rate is what's anticipated for, uh, uh, this, this fifty-five hundred being split between well mine and share. If that goes up next year for some reason, I mean, it could, that, that seemed like a good amount to keep us steady for a while. So those would still be billed itemized in an invoice at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour until we get to those thresholds. So, i- it's, what you would be approving is, as a, uh, as a council tonight would be to, uh, accept the, the engagement letter and begin this relationship. And authorize the staff to put together a contract that would implement that amount. And, uh, it can always be amended later, but that gets us going. Tyler, did you have anything to add to that?
My answer to Jim's question is, it's whatever the council decides, which is not necessarily the answer that you or I think that's reporting.
Plan B.
Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, uh, because this is authorizing you to set up a contract with them. Uh, once you have negotiated that contract, will you come back to us and say, okay, here's what I negotiated, and are we going to then approve that contract? But this just says, we're authorizing you to execute contract, well, execute might not be the right word, we want to see what sort of contract we're approving, in my opinion.
We can bring, I can bring it back to you if you want, but my, my thought was, if this letter looks good for you, approve it, and, and that sets us going. We get, we get that done, and you can, uh, the contracts thing, stuff is, uh, it, all it does is implement this. You know, and then it's got all the other, uh, uh, conditions you'd have in any other contract.
Yeah, Tyler would be approving it.
Right.
Assuming everything, if, if we went that route.
Okay.
If, if, if council wants to approve the letter, then that's what would happen, but if they want to see it again, then that's an option too. Lucy, go ahead.
So, when you just for a little clarification purposes, so when it says here that the, um, seventy-five, twenty-five, is that because seventy-five percent of this enterprise zone is laced over Sheridan and only twenty-five is into Willamette? Or is it based on population? I think I saw the diagram one time, but, you know, I don't have it memorized. So is that why it says seventy-five, twenty-five, and Sheridan pays seventy-five percent? Is that where that first cost, that's my first question.
Population.
Oh, is it population, it's not, because I thought the enterprise zone ran a little bit, covered more of Sheridan and Willamette, I could have been wrong, that's, so it's based on population?
It is, and the enterprise zone covers both cities entirely.
Okay, and so then, and our population, does it also include the prison as part of our population?
It includes the entirety of our population, yes, so then, yes.
So, um, okay, so that's the other reason, other thing I wanted to know. And then, like, for example, if Abishaw were to write a letter and it took her an hour to write it, does that fall under that category of a hundred and eighty-eight dollars an hour? Or does that, when she was talking about contacting people whose property might qualify for this, approaching them, trying to get a hold of them, trying to work that whole strategy up so that we can convince, or they can convince, or I guess as a community, we can convince somebody to do something?
Uh, you're talking about like the pilot program we were talking about last month?
Well, I, I was discussing it sometime, you know, like, she was talking about finding people with land in the industrial zone, you know, going through that whole process, approaching them. Whether you approach them, or you approach them, or I approach them, that are those the hours that they're calculating up at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour or this flat fee? Because that's time consuming, that only that person doing it is knowing kind of what they're doing, or is it for something majorly done after that?
So, yeah, so that, uh.
Yes, what?
That was, I think all that work that she did was, you know, was at one eighty, we, we had like set amounts per phase, but that's already done. Um, we've, you know, paid her for all that, this is everything going forward, um, I'm assuming that what she was, and it's not just Abishaw, several people, but that was the rate, was one eighty, um, I think, during that project. And then going forward with, you know, that they're able to look back on all the work they already did, and they're able to, you know, move forward.
So going forward, what is, what will be done, and I'm, I'm going to use the per hour rate, you know, what's being done at a hundred and eighty dollars an hour? If those properties, looking at our zoning maps, are, that was already, you know, in that presentation, moving forward, what is the clock going to start ticking on?
I guess anytime she's working on one of those, you know.
Not until somebody called and said, hey, look, I'm interested? Or is that them pursuing a property owner, because I kind of, I kind of had the feeling that it could go either way?
Okay, I think, I think, yeah, I think I know what you're.
Just help, just, like, just help clarify for me.
I suppose it'd be anything, well, I guess Preston could probably answer better, I would assume it'd be anything on behalf of the city, but that's.
Yeah, I'd say it, it can go either way, either I'm asking her to do it, or she's doing it as part of the enterprise zone, responding to inquiries. So it, that, uh, beyond, uh, the enterprise zone, basically, which, you know, they need to pursue their initiatives, you know, and pursue the amounts there. Uh, the rest, I would all, I would be approving their work.
The first, we have to cost some energy in regards to properties to qualify in this area.
Well, the, oh, for enterprise?
Yeah, for, yeah, for the enterprise zone, yes.
Yeah, so if, I think when a, when a business is going to come in, um, they can, you know, that should be one of the things that they're notified about, is if they would qualify, um, for tax credits based on their location in the enterprise zone.
So this is about after somebody comes in, not her basically soliciting for them. Your house would be a really good place, so I'm going to call you, but you're not coming in and saying, hey, my house is really qualified, and I'm using that as an example, that I would like to have my house brought into the enterprise zone. Versus she looks at the map and says, who owns that block right there, and then goes, and certainly goes after them, but technically that would be on the clock for her, I would assume.
I think it would be, so I think normally how they operate is if, uh, they hear about a business that wants to, you know, they, they need this, this and this.
So they sit and wait, they sit and wait for them, or somebody to approach them.
Yeah, yeah, I think their, I think their approach, they're large enough where people approach them, or they hear about somebody from Business Org or another organization, they hear about it, and then they look, and then since they're working with us, you know, it's like, okay. You know, this lot doesn't fit their needs, but maybe this one does, and then they can go after, and since they've already done the industrial lands, you know, inventory and study, they, they know who might be willing to sell and who's, who's not, and what's on that, those particular, you know, lots and.
And the other reason they say that is the realtors, and I spend my bills a lot, and I don't get paid for it, but I do a lot of spending of the bills, and this particular case, the spending of the bills gets a hundred and eighty bucks an hour, most of what I wish I got, like, you know what I'm trying to say? So that's why I ask, there's a lot of investment in what I do, that there's nothing, there's no gain, it's just, it's just collecting data and information, and then presenting it. In her case, that's why I was just simply asking, is that because they know who the zone is, they're not going to go out and try to, quote, drum up business per se, as those people, you're going to come to her and ask her, and representing the city, then you're going to take it on from there.
I think if we specifically ask SEDCOR, we want this here, um, then they would bill us for Tyler, they're, we're trying to recruit, uh, and I don't think we're doing that. But if they were, you know, I don't, I don't know how long, you know, that would take, but that's not something we're asking them to do currently.
I wasn't sure if that's just something they were going to do and say, here's the bill. Okay, I just needed, I just needed to know that for my own personal clarification, that's, I was just questions to ask, and depending on, you know, the hourly, the flat rate, you know, I know what time consuming projects are, and some people only get paid by the project, other people get paid by the hour. And depending, you know, who's getting paid, it can be very beneficial, that's, and, you know, Sheridan's a very difficult situation with, of our flood plain and all that crap that we have to fight. It's just a more complicated situation, and I don't think people realize how complicated it is because of that, that dreaded FEMA, it's very complicated. Willamette, they don't have that problem, like, they're going, great for them, and I'm very, very, very proud and very glad for Willamette, that they're able to take off, and we just have this big anchor hanging on us, that's all.
And I think some of those, you know, when it reaches that point, I think then they would, they would put them in touch with our planner or somebody else, and then they would kind of hand, hand it off to them, and then so they would be on the clock.
Okay, that's what I needed, no thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the biggest challenges we have of our industrial lands are, you know, we have the wetlands issue, which is out there, not so much FEMA, uh, which is affecting us more for downtown.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the industrial area, there's all that gray and no flood plain, but a lot of well, so we've got a different problem.
It's just all, it's just all wet.
But I am, I am, uh, Liam invited, sent an invite for a, um, it's like a, a wetlands, uh, inventory Zoom meeting, I forget exactly who's putting it on, but I'm going to attend it, I'm not, probably going to understand everything, but that's on Wednesday. I think Liam is attending it too, uh, because if we could get a well and inventory of the city, then instead of a developer, no.
And it just, it confirms the bad news that we have.
Well, yeah, but if, yeah, but then we could tell a developer, okay, this is where you can go, instead of waiting for them to kind of get interested and then put money into it and invest, and then, oh, nope. It might, it might give us an answer on what to do with the.
So is this on a Zoom thing that you're doing on Wednesday? Could you please give me that information, because I do understand it, because I have talked to the wetlands people before and all that kind of a department, and I would be interested in listening, not that I'm going to get it, but I got, you know, at least I know what they're talking about.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Nick.
Lucy, thank you for your concern about this bill process.
Oh, it's complicated.
But, but, and thank you for saying, looking into it.
Um.
You vote.
Oh, we still have an action item, that's not, um, okay, so, um, um, what, um, what do you think about?
Well, I have, I'm reading the suggested motion. My thought is that, uh, it says here, uh, execute contract after review and approval by the city attorney. However, uh, President said we can bring this contract back with us, so amend them to the motion after it's reviewed and approved by the city attorney and the city council, I think, would be a fair way to, to put that. And we want to bring it back, I think, I'd like to make that motion.
Can I say something before you do that? So was that under the understanding also, President, that you're thinking this particular year running from July to June, that the expenses would maybe be wiser to go per hour for this coming year? Versus next year could be a little bit easier because for a lot of different reasons. Did I hear you kind of say that you felt it might be less active, well, you know, we're almost not really, we're not six months into our new year, but, um, would it be maybe possible to be, then first this year to go by the hour? Because you were saying we may not have that much activity, but it might change next year, and next year obviously starts first of June, I mean, July, so would it be better to maybe think about considering the hourly rate at this time? Because you said you could change it, I take it, that's what you meant, change it to a, to the, uh, you know, the. Change it to a, to the, uh, you know, the gross amount, or the nine thousand dollars versus maybe a hundred and eighty uh, for, at this time?
Uh, well, uh, maybe I'm not quite understanding, uh, exactly what you want, uh, but I'm, I'm.
I'm asking your opinion.
Uh, uh, I, uh, I think there'll be a lot, not a lot of activity this current year. But next year, yes, it's gonna pick up, uh, so this, this, I, I expect, uh, all the bills to kinda come in with that itemization. Either it's for enterprise zone, or it's for, what's called VRE, business retention and expansion, uh, 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 or other, and it's all gonna come in billable based on hourly rates, that's what I expect. And not be a flat rate on anything, but just here's some categories of service, and with a lot of activity, this is kind of what we're looking at. So, instead of just trying to do a few months, or half a year or something, give us a, give the, give it, give the council a look for a, what if this is gonna look like over the course of a year, an half a year? And that could be, you know, thirty-five thousand, you know, estimate. Uh, those being, again, being sort of, uh, maximums, what we would expect. Uh, and, uh, uh, and so what we'll do is we'll put that into a contract. You know, uh, most of it will be all contract language, all pertaining to this in particular, it's, uh, all contracts. But, uh, if there's something in there about the billing or the services that you don't like, you could change it at that time. Uh, but this is, uh, these are the categories that we expect. Enterprise, business retention, expansion, and other.
Uh, Liz.
Why don't we just say that we'll bill them at a hundred and eight dollars an hour, and with a nine thousand dollar cap, and then we can renegotiate at nine thousand dollars?
Uh, the actual, uh, the actual cost is more than nine thousand.
Oh, I thought I read it anyway.
No, it, it's, there's, there's business retention, expansion at nine thousand, there's enterprise zone.
Oh, okay.
There's another, other category, maybe that's ten thousand, uh, so let me get you, you know, let me get you up there to.
If that's, instead of VRE is the nine thousand.
Correct.
Whereas the, does the enterprise zone itself is a little different?
Right.
I misread that also.
So why don't we have a cap, though, that where we renegotiate as a council, like, a hundred and eighty dollars an hour? And then we have a certain amount that we cap at that, twenty thousand or whatever, and then renegotiate.
Well, I would say, uh, cap it at twenty-five, then, uh, is a minimum. Cap at twenty-five then, and, and we'll set up the contract exactly like that. Based on these services, we're gonna spend up to twenty-five thousand a year, billable, and then that's it.
Can I ask you a question, fingers up, yeah? Um, so is it possible for you to say, hey, you know, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar budget, and I just, you know, periodically, the council will say, you know, we're a fourth of the way into the year, and we're already at, you know, seventeen thousand dollars? So that we kinda have an idea of where, where it's going, instead of just saying, hey, you're capped out, and then, you know what I'm saying?
Like a little warning?
A little management of the contract, yes.
Little, little update.
Uh, sure, I think that's, uh, something I'm gonna.
Kinda like what your, what Yvonne does is the grant update, she's got the little sheets, and well, this is where you were, and this is where you're at, then if we ask questions, well, that's not there yet, but it's gotta be there, then we all know in our minds, okay, we're gonna be deducting that amount pretty soon, and that's what that, that end balance is gonna be.
You bet, that's all fun.
That's all.
You bet, uh, and, and we spend, uh, you know, invoices are paid within thirty days. So it's all out there, you know, uh, as far as what the, at level of activity is. Be happy to.
And I think it would be, you know, Secor would, you know, be kind of giving, you know, some kind of updates. I don't know if previously, when they were managing the enterprise zone, if they came and, you know, kinda gave any updates or not, I wasn't around for that. That first management, but I think that would be good, just to know what they're doing and what they're looking at, you know, even if, you know, no one's interested.
Because, that wouldn't be, excuse me, I'm sorry, Jim, you go first, I just kinda. What, well, like what Liz was saying, instead of the cap, Liz would be a way of informing you where you're at in the process.
Yeah, and it would be a, basically a cap for, uh, everything, instead of just one thing, it would kind of be overall, the overall cap. Uh, cause it would be, it'd be about, um, yeah, just with the enterprise zone and the VRE, that looks like it would be about, um, fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
Um, so then we.
And other.
Yeah, yeah, and then other.
We're talking about twenty-five minimum.
Yeah.
I'm not sure with other covers, but either of these.
Other, other covers, everything else that's could be used, to have her assist the city in any way. Right now, I'm paying her to help the Myers work through those regulations and document their compliance. Uh, it's a wonderful service for Secor to be involved in. Uh, and there will be other things too, as we, uh, continue to try and build our town. Abishah is gonna be involved in that, you bet.
Okay, Jim.
Um, I suggest we just go ahead and approve this, and see what contract comes back to you at the next meeting. If we, we agree, then we want to get it approved, and so, yeah, so should I make that promotion?
You just say something, well, yeah, you get, yeah, go make it.
Yeah, I, I moved through the engagement letter with Secor, and I'm authorized the city manager to execute a contract after review and approval by the city attorney and the city council.
Okay, first and a second, any more discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor? Okay, that's enough. Okay. Uh, next, we have, um, Clar Surplus, um, Public Works Vehicle, that's on page sixty-nine. Uh, Ian, go ahead.
I propose to the city designate the two thousand five F three fifty-two O V as surplus.
Sure, any discussion, Danny?
It's a F two fifty?
Oh, it is.
Not a three fifty? Okay, it says F three fifty here, so I'll correct that.
Don't worry, you would say, yeah.
I amend my motion, I propose that the city designate the two thousand five F two fifty.
I see we've got it printed, figured from mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we know, we know what Trump was talking about, so.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, you already did that.
Yeah, I amend my second, I'm here. Okay, all right. Um, well, we have a first and a second, uh, and that was, any other discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Lucy, go ahead.
And so, just once again, for clarification purposes, and this was, um, purchased when?
Two thousand five.
We bought, we bought it brand new?
Well, it isn't two thousand five, I'm not sure when it was purchased.
I'm not sure. How it was acquired, and it's.
I'm going on a limb now, we've had these trucks for a long time, my husband drove one of those, and I have the one they've been around since they were new.
And so, and then am I, am I jumping the gun, if I go to the next page with the one for forty-seven thousand?
Probably, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, um, yeah, but, and let's see, that's just. Yeah, it looks like that's.
Yeah, the council has already approved the, the new truck, that's been approved, and all this is, is to say, do we surplus this, this, F two thousand five, F two fifty, or?
So I guess the question that I would like to know is, you know, about how much money has the city spent on new vehicles for the Public Works apartment? It seems like we've done over a hundred, a thousand, maybe, over a hundred?
For years.
No, they just located another piece of machinery for Public Works, brand new, was it some kind of a mower tractor thing, it was something for a hundred and eighty thousand, and they wanted another thing, I was just wondering what the total for the inventory for vehicles we have spent on Public Works was for, I mean, if you can remember, because we're pretty good.
Don't blame it, please, Preston, because I don't trust numbers.
I just kinda wanted to know what, how much money's been invested in Public Works for equipment.
For this year, um, that was.
And the year's running from June to July, that's our year, okay?
July, June.
Or, yeah, I guess, I would get that a little back.
Yeah, it, it seems like, you know, what I've noticed, Lucy, is that every year, we seem to buy another truck, that's what it seems like. And this, this is from the first time that I remember I was actually saying, oh, I wanna surplus one, I, I don't know where they've all been parked before, but this is the first surplus that I've seen come to us.
Um, it's not really, I just kind of, it's kind of for future reference, you know, like, you know, this is like, it's been brought to my attention, you know, that Public Works is spending a lot of money, and I thought, in my last seven years, I have noticed that PPS has spent a lot, and there's sometimes I don't mind it, and sometimes I'm not sure if it's really required. But that's why I'm asking questions now.
Good.
This council approved, uh, I didn't. Ten vehicle purchases totaling four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars that were specifically outlined in the budget.
For this year?
There, yes, and then there may be additional, um, budget for these kinds of purchases, not broken out.
So we budgeted to buy ten of different, ten items, yeah. Yeah, ten items.
Large pieces of equipment, vehicles, but that's, again, that's over the course of the three years.
Oh, that's the three.
Purchase in one year.
They were all approved in this year's budget.
Yeah, they're all approved, but we're not buying them all this year.
And that was for part of the, um, the improvement, capital improvement for the CIP.
Right, CIP, right, uh, which, all, all the CIP was basically a three-year program. It's a, a budget for it all, but not all this year, yeah.
So, anyway, that, now you can go ahead and do the other part, I just wanna have that little number stuck in my mind there a little bit, you know, for future reference.
Yeah, I believe we're just on discussion, any other discussion for, on that? Okay, um, okay, uh, well, then, all in favor?
And there you go.
Okay, thanks, Melissa, uh, okay, so that's, um, so the, yeah, that's, okay, so next. Um, next, we have the, um, community, um, or community grants. Uh, and we have a lot, uh, but we also have, what is the, the, um, the budget we have, because I, it's.
Two thousand five hundred dollars per quarter.
Per quarter?
That's correct, it says on the background page.
Okay, um, so, right, but we have, so we have ten thousand for community development grants, but then we also have ten thousand for community events and grants? Is that, when I read that.
Yeah, so it's for others, the, the, for the events part, um, Preston, um, suggested that the budget committee budget for beyond that, so we're not trying to have the American Legion put in for the cooling center to have, or, or, um, when we host, uh, like, the trunketry, we put it, you know, Angela, or parades, you know, we're putting in for, and we're going up against other people, um, when we have our own events, so that's kinda more, so when the city hosts an event, we're not trying to go against community members for community grants.
So we, we, so, do we have five thousand then, for this quarter, separately?
No, still twenty-five hundred a quarter.
Okay. Okay, uh, okay, Lucy, go ahead.
Did you have your hand up, did you wanna ask a question?
It did, but then I, then I was, I lost it, thank you, I'm gonna go back.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a small question, so, um, is community events just for clarification? So like, in other words, like, when we do the toilets at Phil Sherman Days, and I'm always gonna call it that, so this could be as good. Um, you know, that's kind of away from the, um, community grants, that's. Yeah, actually, I'm asking kind of Yvonne, unless somebody else knows this, and it might be Preston. So that doesn't include that, because that doesn't take away from these other causes, correct, like the, because the toilets are always pretty important during that time, and I know the city in the past has paid for that, for, if that's what you're calling a community event. And not that it's a community event, but like when the Legion Hall does activities for all those people, that is, I think, didn't you put that on the line budget in the budget, is that the same thing, or am I not, this is why I'm asking questions?
Well, let me, uh, let me give an overview of that.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Preston, I have your just a moment, can you have an order, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm.
Uh, Toronto just won the seventh game of the.
Ah, darn it.
Sorry.
Well, uh, I'll do my own point of order, strike that from the record, that was improper use of pardon. While we're bringing a resolution for censorship, it's censured.
Four three, four to three Gs.
All right, too bad, close doesn't count in baseball.
Well, I guess, thanks for the, okay.
They put that in.
Yeah, okay, all right, go ahead, sorry, go ahead, Preston.
I side with him, did you hear that? That was in harmony, I'm not even watching that baseball, so, anyway.
Point of personal privilege.
You were talking about the overview of the community events and grants, kinda bring that up.
Okay, uh.
Ian, maybe you wanna jump in? Uh, is, are, have all these, um, those that have applied this time, did they apply properly, and, I don't know, before we start discussing that, you know?
Yes, they've got letters, did he have these?
It's in the package, oh, it's in that.
To the, to the front, I'm sure, I'm just making sure that, because it was, they're weeding out without it. It was an applicant that didn't apply properly, so, last night.
Gotcha, yep.
That was my question.
Okay.
So, uh, uh, the, uh, the heating and cooling center, American Legion, that'll be a call out in our budget. So in the future, it doesn't compete with the community grants. Uh, I've got that, uh, a note, yeah, whole page of notes for our supplemental budget, we're looking at probably December. Possibly January, or, yeah, we're in our finance structure on board, but that's, and the other thing, uh, to call out in a good line without it competing is CERT. CERT's another program, that's a county-wide program, that we benefit tremendously here, and we should do, and we should support that. That should be another call out, uh, so.
I'm gonna define that, please, CERT.
Yeah, that's the, uh, uh, the Community Emergency Response Team. It's, uh, it's organized, uh, through volunteers, basically, it's some, there's a lot of coordination through emergency management at the county. And so, uh, uh, there's, I think there's, that's worthy of a call out in our budget for every city we have, have a call out to support CERT. Uh, so the, so you have, you have sources, uh, right now, in the budget, you have community grants. And, and, uh, and I've got, uh, I've got the community grants combined into, as, as Yvonne mentioned, uh, community events and grants. So your twenty-five hundred per quarter for regular community grants, it's included within that amount. Plus more to help on sponsorship of community events, as well as outreach and things. It's kind of a catch-all, uh, and, uh, and I wanna be bold and suggest a different process for your community grants. Uh, but before I get into that, uh, Jim, you might wanna jump in?
Yeah, I, I really do, I'm, in the past, every quarter, we use the total of twenty-five hundred dollars available for the request for a community grant. Right at this moment, I know that's gonna be a long discussion, who do we give the money to? We've got ten thousand dollars set wide for that, which is why we got the twenty-five hundred dollars, you got another ten thousand that you use for community events and grants, they're separate. So tonight, we just need to decide, how do we pass out twenty-five hundred dollars to eight different organizations that requested money, do I have that correct?
Yes.
If there's seven, uh. If there's seven, uh.
Are you okay?
Yeah, and if you felt compelled to give more tonight, you could, uh, but, uh.
No, no, they cannot, they have approved rules for themselves regarding the community that budgets twenty-five hundred dollars per quarter.
They do.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, well, then, maybe tonight's not the night to talk about a whole different process.
I agree.
I have a suggestion, though, um, we put the, the city's code drive that we're doing in cooperation with the Rotary on here. Um, we put that on here only because we wanted to make sure before we took it out of the community events money, that it was something that the council was in support of. So it could easily be moved out of this and put into the other fund for events that the city is holding, so, um, that is one that we could take out of there, um, easily.
Wouldn't the trunk or treat be a community event then too?
Yeah, we don't have that on here, though.
I thought somebody did, oh, the chamber is.
Yeah, the, the first one.
That's for their haunted hallways, I think.
Yeah, but that's for candy, though, right?
Yeah, for their, for their event, not for the, not for the trunk or treat. They're two separate events.
Oh, okay.
Which one's a trunk or treat?
The trunk or treat, we, is, is a safety money event.
It's not in this number, correct?
Okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah, they happen at the same place, I get the gist, okay. Um, okay. Lucy, do you, do you still, you have, do you still have a question?
On mute, okay, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I'm going back to what Preston was saying about the ten thousand towards community things, I think since we just no longer have a vet, we really have to keep up with the vaccination clinics for people too, because that's very important, to help people out with vaccinating their animals. And then the other question, so are, are we down to seven, um, community grant applications that we're gonna look at, and we're taking, pulling one out, that might be a city one?
Sounds like it.
Correct?
So the code drives can be a community event, consider it a community event, so now, we're seven, or? Oh, yeah, that's true, um, Jim, do you have something?
Well, because this is always a little contentious, because all these, uh, grant requests are valid, and if you read through what they're doing, these are all good things, they aren't just frivolous things that come up. I have different opinions about them, but it makes no difference, they're not trying to hide anything, they're telling us exactly why they want the money. So we can decide to, uh, try and decide to toss out two of the grant requests by saying, hey, sorry, you didn't make the cut. Or, we can just, uh, change around, we've got seven grants requests now, a lot of them on five hundred dollars, and a lot of them, that five hundred dollars is still just a drop in the bucket for what we really want. But if we just divide the, uh, available money out, and give each, uh, grant request three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents, we've helped each of these organizations, maybe not as much as they would like, because I'm sure they'd like even more than five hundred, but, uh, that might be a fair way to do that, that's about all I'm gonna say about this.
Good, uh, Ian?
I, I think, I, if I, if I may, I, I would like to make an amendment to your idea, um, that maybe we select several, um, that we care about more than the others. Directly into five hundred, and the rest can split.
Oh, that's, that's tougher, but I don't, I don't disagree with you, because, because what I was saying is, these are all very tough things, and, you know, these people, they're, they're not just some guy that says, hey, can I get five hundred dollars? No, it's, it's groups that are requesting our help, and I don't like to just, you know, tell somebody, well, you, yours isn't that important. Because, to me, it might not be that important, but to them, it is, so that's why I'm, I'm always telling them to, you know, I agree with you, some of these might, and Yvonne's gonna tell me what I really wanna know, I think.
I, I have another suggestion on top of that suggestion, which I don't normally, um, make, but if, if you read Preston's email about what he'd like to, um, do for the holiday hams and turkeys, so, if it's, he'd like to give equally to the food bank, what he distributed to staff and, um, volunteer, um, such as yourself, that perhaps we can talk to Judy, and maybe she's just gonna say, oh, I've got turkeys and hams handled, what I needed was, you know, two hundred boxes of stuffing, and maybe we take that and help her with the food in that way, um, and not so much as the flat five hundred dollars, um, maybe whatever hams and turkeys are gonna be equal to, maybe there's something that would benefit them more, because I know, like, maybe YCAP is supplying them with, like, an enormous amount of hams and turkeys, but they have to get all the sides, so, maybe whatever we give to the food bank is equivalent dollar amount to what we bought for, um, the hams and turkeys for our annual staff. Just a suggestion, that might come out to be a little bit more, but it would also help to pull one out from this particular step.
And, and I'm just gonna add, add to the fact, so what you're, what you're suggesting is, pull the food bank out and put that also into the, uh, the, uh, community event?
Yes, because that's essentially what Preston's sort of turning that into, with, um, wanting to make it an, a, a special thing for the food bank, an annual thing for the food bank.
Right, I get it now, thank you, so then it would be, six, no, six, okay, uh, we can do it, four sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents each, if we don't. Am I correct? We could push a little more up, because, uh, the Bridge Learning Committee only wants four hundred, so that sixteen can be divided by six again, if you want.
Yeah, that's four.
Two dollars is gonna make a big difference.
It's all, it's all done with the dollars.
First of all, Lucy's got her hand up, and I don't know how long it's been there, so.
It might have been, Liz, do you, you have a new question, or was that from before?
No, I always said, I put my, I put, can you hear me?
Yes.
I put my hand up to say it would be four sixteen, and we pulled that, we gave it one, yeah, so, let me take it down, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it's down, okay, thanks, yeah.
So, first of all, are you talking about specifically oriented towards the holidays? A holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas type of deal, versus their annual, whatever they're doing, whatever they're doing type thing, with the food bank?
This is for their, yeah, their request is specifically for holiday food distribution, so that's why I'm saying, um, perhaps we, instead of doing just tur- instead of turkey and ham, we talk to them about what they need for that distribution, and we give them the equivalent dollar amount in that way, which is going to probably be, well, usually the hams and turkeys are usually roughly seven hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, she's got eight, she's got eight thousand dollars down her.
But she's requesting five hundred.
I know, I know, and that's a, yeah, that's a small amount, so, okay, so then, I'm still talking from my hand being raised, so, you know, hey, I'm getting old, I'm getting set in my ways, I don't really care, just gonna say it. So I got a real issue, you know, first of all, candy versus food, starvation versus cavities. I also know that the Chamber of Commerce sent every business, and I think they have forty-four members, a donation, uh, asking for fifty dollars apiece, if somebody's real good, like Jim with this mess, he could probably figure that out for me. Not saying that somebody's, everybody's gonna give fifty dollars, but that kinda gives me an idea, that I don't, for me, my priorities, because I kind of am priority oriented, is about feeding, leaning more towards feeding people who don't have the capacity to even have a place to take a shower, it really bothers me, but, you know, the food that, uh, that, and specifically tonight, because Bobby was here from the Legion Hall, that, um, you know, they take the people that the other people don't want, and they feed them, and they treat them like human beings, and they treat them with respect, so I got a big problem with wasting money on crap, I'm sorry. And, you know, there's a lot of people that do candy, you got your trunk or treat, I don't know if that's even part of the same thing, because I just, I don't even do that thing, but I also know that there's a lot of people that have candy in their houses, so first of all, I don't know, I think that I'm prioritizing putting warm food in people's bellies, that's where I'm at, on that, and then, as you go through these, because now revitalization, you know, I'm kind of more inclined, like Jim said, the important ones, and then anything else, you probably could, if you lay out, they, they evidently, well, the Mercantile sign looks pretty good, that, that they helped them pay for that, and not that, not that it matters, but we all know they, they were going through some tough times, and I thought that was a very kind thing of the revitalization to do, to try to bring spirits up for our little community, I, sorry, I haven't noticed one across, you know, the closet place, but I also did not know that that closet place, I'm sorry, you know the name of it? Um, Yvonne, I can't think of it, um, you know, the little, Reuben Hersberger's old place.
The clo- the clothing closet thing?
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't know what it is.
Here's Reuben's shop, I would, I know, but it's not, okay, that place, I, I guess when they're having showers, and I don't know, you heard her say it, but I did hear her say it, that they give certificates to the people so they can go to that place to get clean clothes to wear after they take a shower, and I know this is from people that I've talked to, that nothing feels better than a clean shower, and to have clean clothes to put on afterwards, so I might even suggest to other people who wanna donate, you should donate to her, if she's actually doing that for the community, because I never knew about it until I heard about it from the Legion Hall, which I think is very commendable for our, our community, even though I don't think she's in this list of people to do, but, you know what I'm saying, because it's the winter months, people are gonna be cold, kinda go through. And the revitalization also paid for their signage that they're having on their building, those are the two people they picked, the Mercantile, and they picked the, the, the lady down there who is way free close to people who are in dire need of that, I, I have a tendency to want to come back in that situation, and then the city just revoked theirs, which was probably very nice of them. Graduation party, you know, the nice thing about the graduation party is, there's still a couple more quarters they can hit us up for, even if they didn't get the phone, because, you know, but I don't have a problem with that. And it's the same thing with the Booster Club, you know, I tried to read exactly what they wanted to do, um, and then the Bridge of Learning is, it was a little carnival, which, I'm not even sure how many people show up for that, the little Bridge of Learning, because I've never been down there, and I don't really kinda know what's going on, so, in my mind, um, I'm sticking to what I do know, which is people who are hungry, people who are cold, you know, people who need to be taken care of during the holidays, and if there is anything left, and you subtract what threw people out of there, maybe there's enough for everybody now. But I think the maximum should go to the people that are actually giving back to the community, to our poor, underprived community, where other people kinda don't wanna mess with them, and then maybe what's left as a residual, if you wanted to, you could, you know, pass it out to the, the other ones, but I'm not a big candy, I mean, I buy and give it to people, but, you know, I mean, five hundred dollars plus fifty bucks a whack at a business with forty-four businesses, that's a lot of freaking candy, so, I don't, God bless y'all, amen.
Okay, Ian?
Uh, I'm all for splitting it up, hopefully, and however, um, I'm not, for the reasons I've stated before, I would not want to approve it if it included American Legion sandwiches.
Gotcha, okay.
Jim, did you do some math? I did some math, uh, if we, if you manage to pull the, uh, money for the food bank, uh, holiday, put that in the community event column versus the, uh, community development grant column, and if we pull the coast of kids and put that in the, uh, community event column, we're down to, uh, six requests, and again, that comes to four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents each. That, uh, does, uh, keep the Bridge Learning Community, uh, very happy, if there's sixteen dollars left, if they didn't ask for what we've given, or we can split it up again, but, uh, I think what you've just said, Lucy, all those things, you're exactly correct, that, uh, you've decided this and that aren't as important, and you, I'm not disagreeing with you, you're right.
No, I know that, I know that nobody wants to say that, but I thought I'd just say it.
But here's, here's, was my point, my point initially is, even if I, I'll use me as an example, if I don't think something's important, there's still a group of people that think it is important, that's why they came to us, so if, you know, if we, it has to be a decision made by the entire council, who are we not going to include? That's what we're down to, uh, if we can find one more, uh, grant request that we're not going to provide, then everybody gets their money. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not pulling for or against anyone, but, uh, I sure hate to let some group, you know, down while other groups that may or may not be as deserving, uh, get what they're looking for.
Oh, yeah, Liz, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'm a hundred percent with Lucy, um, Trump just halted seven hundred and fifty-seven Oregonian food stamps for next month, like, he's, there will not, not be any food stamps going out next month. And as far as our food assistance, he's also cut that in Oregon, I think we need to focus on people eating, rather than on candy for one little holiday, because there's a lot of people showing up for that holiday. I know, I'm one of the volunteers, and I'll have lots of candy, but, but as far as food goes, there's not a lot of people that, that can afford food right now, and they won't even have their food stamps, nor will they have the, the regular food bank that they're used to having, so I, I'm agreeing with Lucy, I, I think we really need to prioritize people in need over, you know, a holiday event.
Ian?
Uh, we're gonna prioritize people eating in the community, which I would disagree with as the government's responsibility, um, but, that being said, if we are going to support that, um, I would love to see Churches United in here, I would love to see the Mennonites in here, um, they are doing beautiful things in the community too, they're feeding the community, and, and they're doing it well. And I, and I would, and, and those are organizations that should be doing those things, in, I think, my opinion, but, uh, again, the American Legion is not for that. That's not what they're for, is for veterans who are in need, who are hurting and in pain, who don't wanna go to a place full of non-veterans, who are not, not there for them, I don't wanna go there. I'm, I'm not gonna go to the American Legion and bare my soul to people, I'm not gonna do it, and no, most people aren't either, that's why there's not a lot of veterans out there.
We're getting off track here, we have grants that were requested, people put in for them, we've got it down to six now, is that correct?
That's correct.
I, uh, think we should carry on and get these people the four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents, and, and let's get moving on, we're beating a dead horse here.
Is that a motion, Ian?
That's a motion, I'm saying, thank you.
Okay, so, um, discussion on that, so I believe the motion is to give, give it equally.
Yes, yes, that's what I understand, I didn't make it, but yeah, that's correct.
To the, um, to the group, six, six.
Grants, but were you, uh, going to be passing up twenty-two?
Okay.
Who was the second? I'm sorry, was that you, Jim?
No, no, it was Ian.
Not Ian, you're sorry?
Ian was second, were you second, Ian?
Yes, I said, yeah.
Okay, sure, I'm at first second, okay. Okay, uh, discussion then. Okay, um, okay, any, oh, Jim?
Yeah, I, I'm kinda, I'm kinda beating the dead horse, we all have, you know, I don't disagree with you, that hungry people deserve food, okay? They, they deserve, they deserve, uh, to be treated, like you said, as human beings, I wholeheartedly agree with that, but what we're doing here, we're responding to people's grant requests, and all we get is the choice of giving, either on their request, or spreading it out, and, you know, giving everybody something of what they requested, because if we were to do it differently, we'd sit here and go, well, geez, people are starving out there, let's come up with two thousand dollars of our own and get it out there, that's not what we're doing tonight, we're trying to, uh, come to these grant requests, but I wholeheartedly agree with you, it's terrible that people, you know, can't eat, don't eat, don't have food to eat, don't have money, money to eat in their house, disgusting, but we, we are, all we get to do tonight is simply approve or disapprove any of these.
So, I'll say one more thing, Jim, so, because you said divide it equally, four sixty-six.
Yep, four sixty-six.
Then I would, I would, whatever motion, which I don't even think this is the proper sequence, so feel free to jump into that, that the American Legion gets their full five hundred and split the rest, because they don't have extra people that are gonna donate to them, and if you heard Bobby, she takes money out of her own pocket, make to-go containers, so that nobody has to go away. And if you heard Bobby, she takes money out of her own pocket, make to-go containers, so that nobody has to go away. So that nobody has to go away without a warm meal. And, you know, they're not gonna be as lucky as, uh, chamber members who are gonna sponsor other groups and help out. Because she's on the poverty end of it, not the, uh, other end of it. So, you know, if you wanted to, I would just say, to give the Legion Hall the five hundred dollars, they also do share in a great act, you know, a great service. Because a couple years ago, everybody was, you know, mobbing, that nobody wanted to take care of the people when it was odd-out five, and they didn't wanna give them, they didn't want them in the library, they didn't want them in their facility. And the Legion Hall has gone over and beyond to take the people that nobody wants, and they take care of them. And it might not be the right fit for everybody, but it sure is a lot of, a good fit for people who don't have anything. So, I vote for the people who have nothing, and give them a little something more. And, um, that I don't care if you divide it amongst the rest of them, that as long as the one person that, you know, hot meals are going out to, um, then, you know, I'm taking care of, I'm taking care of the people, the community.
So the, to make that motion, this motion would have to fail. So right now, we're just gonna vote on four sixteen equally to the six identified. Jim.
Um, we're trying to create consensus. And again, I'm not disagreeing with you, okay? We've heard, Ian has said, he's not in favor of giving the American Legion anything. So here's what I'm willing to add to the motion. I will personally give eighty-four dollars of my money to the American Legion. That meets their five hundred dollar request, and we still give everybody else four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents, and move on with the meeting, otherwise we're gonna be here all day and night.
Well, thank you very much, Jim, go for that.
That works for everybody.
I'll split it for you.
Thank you. So I think we're, I think we're there, the motions been made, right?
So this, the two, three?
So we're, we're there, so the motion's been made, right?
Fine, I'll get in on it.
Yep, discussion, uh, discussion can be over, okay? If, if, if that's it, uh, now you can call for a vote. Um, all in favor? Okay, uh, pose. Okay, that passes. Okay. We will move on then to the North Bridge paving award, which is on page eighty-two.
Well, there's a little bit of explanation with this item, uh, your honor. Uh, the, uh, the work is on Main Street, uh, uh, and this is to grind down the crown, uh, and then to, uh, to apply a chip seal, uh, to what we have left. And, uh, this is a way to help preserve the roads. It's not the, it's not the full fix, it's much more expensive, it's much more work involved. But, uh, the road's in bad shape, we need to take care of it, and this is a good effort that'll, that'll, uh, make this street nice, this section, uh, for up to ten years. I think that's a little, uh, a lot to think of, ten years. Uh, but, uh, uh, what's not in this contract are digouts. When you grind down, there are some spots where you have to repair the base. That's all we're gonna take care of, that's what our crew can take care of. That's why it's not in the contract. But there's gonna be some of that, this is part of the, our cost. So we would dig out any of the subgrade that needs to be replaced and compacted, uh, to prep for the contractor, once they grind it all down. So that's the process for that. Uh, uh, so this, so this grindout and all was, uh, uh, was a phone bid solicitation, and we got a very good price, uh, it's seventy thousand for, for the, the sections that we looked at. Uh, uh, so, um, we looked at trying to have, uh, uh, some more unit costs to add to this. And we can, uh, add, uh, another whole section of street while they're doing this at the same unit price, basically. Uh, 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 and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be more than amount that you wanna set tonight. But, uh, this motion here allows us to amend the contract and add more linear feet to Main Street repairs, okay? Uh, uh, and, uh, within, uh, within state law, we could basically double the amount. Uh, well, so what we're asking you to do is to approve this contract, plus allow us to amend it, but put a cap on it, say fifty thousand. Don't go over fifty thousand, but, so we'll work with that on staff to extend this on the same pricing and get much more done at this great price.
Jim can ask. So how many blocks, 'cause this is on North Bridge, so I, I know it's, it's really bumpy right there by the food bank. So that first, how many blocks are they gonna?
There's four blocks, huh?
Is it four?
Correct.
Okay, so it goes from basically the light, four blocks, which, to Blair? And that's, that's first, so seventy to do, seventy thousand to do.
Four blocks, yeah, yeah, and we're thinking we could extend that quite a bit and get probably, you know, at least half that done, same unit price, uh, uh, and extend that, uh, another couple of blocks. Uh, uh, it has to be looked at and evaluated and all, but, uh, uh, I, it's a good price. And it's, it's within the budget of the streets, you know, to do that. Uh, uh, and, uh, so I, I would suggest you consider this and adding, but put a cap on it. And we'll come up with a price and get it done.
Okay, so, so this seventy thousand, though, is for the four blocks, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause after Blair, there's, I mean, there's, I mean, short.
It's a dead end.
It's a dead end. So, what, then you'd be going to South Bridge?
The other direction.
So you go the other way?
Correct.
Okay.
Other way as in?
It's toward south, toward the ri- toward the tracks.
Right.
Over the bridge.
So, okay.
So, okay, so if, if it were extended, then it would start paving, fixing South Bridge?
Yeah, and I, I never got that far in a conversation with Kai.
Okay.
You know, but expanding the linear feet, you know, another fifty percent, you know? Uh, that's, that's, that's thirty-five thousand, you know, uh, uh, to get a couple more blocks. Uh, uh, and I didn't, uh, discuss exactly which direction, you know, uh, that goes, but, uh, it, it's a way to take advantage of a great contract, really.
Did, um, was it, was it also looked at to, instead of, uh, you know, grinding the, the crown and then the, if it's just repaving the whole section, I'm assuming that's a lot more, um, you know, money to do that? I'm just wondering if that was, you know, looked at too.
It was, and it's not only a lot more, but it triggers other street improvements that you have to do when you do an overlay.
Okay.
This is not an overlay.
Okay.
This is a, this is a repair, uh, uh, that's, uh, that's gonna get a lot of extra life out of the roads, but it's not the ultimate repair, like an overlay.
Okay. 'Cause I'm wondering if, I mean, since it is a collector's street, it's still busy, I'm wondering if it's gonna, you know, kinda get that again, but.
It will.
Yeah. Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering, you know, I'm not disagreeing with any of you, but I'm sort of, how did you pick North Bridge out of all, all the streets you could have possibly picked?
Well, uh, North Bridge is well-traveled and, and it's in bad shape.
One of the, um, things I asked Kai about, uh, when he came back, was, uh, how we could fix that. So that might have been what, what he kinda had, uh, an idea of, uh, just because I know it's really bad, and it's right there off of Main. And any, any fixes on Main, I believe, would have to be ODOT unless we wanna just, I mean, 'cause those are our streets. I guess we could, I don't know if it's even legal to fix their streets or not, but, I mean, I mean, we, we could, but it wouldn't be technically fixing our own stuff, you know what I mean? But I know Bridge right there is, and that's what I, that's why I mentioned that Kai, you know, it's, it's, it's been a while, but, um, so that might be, you know, why that was kinda focused on. I also mentioned South Bridge right here by the, by the tracks.
That answers that one question, I do have one more, but it's the same thing. I'm reading your suggested motion, and I understand what you said about potentially expanding the contract at a really good price to get some more roadwork done. Where in this suggested motion does it say that, that we're gonna, you know, get more done? And also, where do we, where to take, where, what the cap we're gonna put on that is?
That would be where we would have to choose the cap.
Yeah, that's what I'd say, you, you would want to add that amount. But, uh, it's, it's worded, uh, and, uh, apparent, I'm, you know, this is addressing the state law purchasing, uh, requirements for public works projects, which we, uh, subscribe to. And, and for, uh, a, a contract this size, basically, under state law, you could approve change orders for doubling the amount. Uh, we're not asking for that, we're asking, you know, for you, for you to put a cap on it. I'd say, you know, you know, forty thousand, okay, maybe fifty, uh, uh, something like that. Give us the what, to work with, and we will extend that and get as much out of that as we can.
It would probably be like a karma for that periodism, it's like with,
Correct.
Um, you know, like with the cap, oh, and.
Yes, that's all I could do is add that point to it.
Since I don't have the budget for it, and quite frankly, it'd take me a minute to find it if I did, how do we know how, where to put the cap? As counselors, do we, do we take your suggestion that forty thousand, it's in the budget and it's doable? Or do we, is there something else we should be looking at? It's gonna ground budget.
It's, it is in the budget, and there's plenty in my industry, re- street repairs to take care of that. We did have, uh, one of our CIPs was, uh, Bridge Street. Uh, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. That doesn't mean we can't come back and do something else, but this would take us to about, you know, one, one thirty-five or something, you know, see. So, we're even within the budget of the CIP item for this project.
Thank you. I understand more or less. Uh, I'm not sure if Ian, Ian, do you still have something?
She was supposed to keep, he asked.
Okay, go ahead, Lucy.
So, hard for me to go back and try to be focused when I wanna ask, but, so I'm trying to have notice that, 'cause I, you know, I cross right in front of the food bank every day, four times a day. I guess I didn't notice it because there's so many other streets there, and so, shit, it's not that bad. So, asking you, so if they are willing to do, because it's, it's, um, and I'm gonna have to even drive down that last stretch between Sherman Street and Blair Street, because the stub off of Blair Street is only meant there for the personal use of the homes that are sitting there, for the homes that are looking at them in my mind, versus that one street that goes from Sherman Street to Blair Street. I don't know if that's that bad of a street, but you're basically saying if they paved the street, let's say you get four blocks, you could take, I'm gonna drive across that one in front of the food bank tonight. As long as it kinda connects to, or, like, if you're going to do South Bridge Street, you would have to eliminate the intersection. And it's kinda too bad, because that intersection's kinda bad in some ways. And then you'd have to eliminate the bridge, because I'm pretty sure that's a county bridge. So now you're coming back over on this side of the street, and I'm gonna have to pay attention to the street a little bit better tomorrow. Does it have to kind of, it reminds me of a puzzle, does it have to touch where North Bridge Street is? In other words, if there was a bad segment in front of the library, but would that be an option versus, I know they grounded it down between the Legion and Calgary Chapel, but I don't know if they did that street, or if it starts at the next street down. Yeah, I just need to be a little bit more observant in my mind, but does it kinda just have to almost kinda touch? Or does it have to be easy for the guys who are doing it to say, well, you know, we appreciate this, 'cause I'm trying to get the most out of our money too, I'm trying to find something that's certain for certain, versus, well, that might be able to make it if it's not traveled that much. So is that something that could be taken in as a possible alternative street?
Uh, I'd say that this is, uh, uh, has to be basically a continuation of this. Uh, so we're talking Main Street. Uh, well, uh, you can skip over the intersection, uh, for instance.
Well, you know, well, yeah, you might as well.
You know, but, uh, but this strategy is a particular strategy, one for Main Street, okay? Number one.
Bridge.
Bridge.
Pardon me, for, for a bridge street, it's a particular strategy. Uh, uh, and, uh, and then it's convenient for them to just keep working and, 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 and adding in the linear feet as they go. Uh, uh, as far as side streets go, other streets, and we'd have a, perhaps a completely different repair, uh, uh, strategy for those.
Because you're gonna do this with chip.
Correct.
Like they did Yamm Hill Street a year, it was probably two years ago.
Like the chip seal type.
I think, I think Yamm Hill was the, I don't, I don't know if they ever ground it, I don't know if they ground it or not, if they just went over.
Oh, yeah, they just, uh.
I think they just drove over it with the stuff.
But kind, it's gonna end up looking like that.
Pretty much, and I, and I'm not sure exactly, but, uh, my guess is yes, probably, that's what, it's a chip seal, uh, uh, that they do. Uh, so, uh, if that's what they did for that section, that's, yeah, that's what you're looking at.
I like the idea of this, I'm just not sure if there might be something that touches that North Bridge Street that might be in mourning as long as it touches? 'Cause it kinda sounded like it'd be touch.
Well, uh.
And maybe we should all drive around a little bit and kinda do a survey says, but I'm for this. I'm just wondering if it might be, if it touches, if it might be better to do Yamm Hill Street maybe, or?
Yamm Hill is done.
You know, but I don't know if it was done, I, I mean, I just have, you know, honestly, you gotta just drive it and look at it, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, Yamm Hill was that chip seal project, uh, two years ago.
Yes, it was. This is a grinding and, and, and a, and a finished chip seal like that.
Well, yeah, uh, I, I wouldn't wanna grind, I don't know. Uh, but, um, I don't know, I think North, you know, that section, North Bridge, there's a, there's a couple spots that are still smooth, but there's a few spots that are pretty bad, but if, that would be a whole, if we're talking about other streets, I think that would be a whole other bit, whole other process. Uh, but we still have, but I think the total budget is two hundred and fifty thousand for streets. Actually, no, two hundred and fifty thousand just for the North Bridge project, uh, for the Bridge Street paving project. So there's other money for other streets, and, um, I mean, we did talk about a, um, road, uh, I forget the, the actual term, but it was like a, a study to tell us basically what roads were, were really bad and what ones we should be fixing. Uh, we can always look at that again, because that would, yeah, tell us.
Well, your honor, we, uh, we've got a very aggressive capital projects program for the next three years. Uh, and we can add to that. Uh, there's a lot of maintenance to catch up on. We haven't done street maintenance a lot in recent years, okay? And this was a big project to address in the meeting. Uh, what you're talking about is determining some true street priorities and, uh, getting some of the other streets done, absolutely. You know, I would be coming to the Budget Committee next, uh, year, uh, with specific recommendations. Uh, council can do that anytime you want, uh, but I caution you for doing too much all at once.
Yeah.
You know, I'm trying to hire staff to get above water, you know?
Well, I think it's, it's good, so, we have a plan, and I don't know if we've had a street approval plan before, but it, it, we do have a plan, instead of just saying, oh yeah, this, this road's really bad, let's go fix that one. Uh, there's tons of roads in town that need to be fixed. Um, but unless we have a plan to fix them, then it's gonna be very, really sporadic, and, um, probably not a great use of funds if we're just throwing money at different streets just 'cause somebody says, hey, that's one real bad. If we have a plan, then I think we'll actually be able to fix them and fix them right, and hopefully they're gonna last a while. But, um, right now, we have a bid for North Bridge, uh, which I, I, I personally know is bad, uh, but, um, I think since bridges travel, I mean, it's either Main or Bridge seems to be how people get into town. Um, and those side streets need to be fixed too, but they're, I mean, they're not as traveled as much as Bridge and Main. And Main is an ODOT road, and we don't fix those. Uh, in Bridge, we do, so, um, this is probably a good, good step in the right direction.
A good start, I'm getting back up to a more comfortable maintenance model.
Yeah.
Jim? I'm all in favor of making the motion out of it, I just would like to ask. Several months, Kai, we had two different companies come in, offering the service of surveying all of our streets, telling us which ones were the worst ones. Well, they presented it, but we never took any action on it. So it sounds like now what we're doing is, I'm not criticizing you, oh, you're, you're kinda just picking, well, North Bridge would work, and we got a good bid, let's go with that. And North Bridge is bad, I mean, I'll take your report on that. But, uh, we had an opportunity to have all of our streets surveyed, we didn't take it, it just seemed. It just seems odd that we're now picking and choosing offhand, again, it's another, I'm just agreeing with you.
I think, I think Civil West, I think Civil West was, they were too expensive, the company that came in was over the amount that, uh, we had put in the budget. But they were the best of the best, and Civil West, I thought it was even worse.
I thought they were less.
Yeah, I would say, Jim, uh, that, um, uh, we don't need a survey. We can go up, we can determine where the worst needs are and fix those. And we can determine on a, on a year by year basis, Civil West is our city engineer, they can help evaluate. Uh, we don't need to do a survey, we need to get, invest in our streets.
Ian, did you have to look?
Jim, Jim answered a lot of questions I was gonna ask, uh, I guess I'll move the previous question.
So, go ahead, Jim. Let's see if I can read this correctly, let's close it down.
Well, before you start, Jim, I'll just say, I would make, I would recommend that you just make the motion, uh, as, as written, authorizing. Awarding the contract and then just say not to exceed, and just say the total number.
Yeah, I, what I did, I had, uh, almost half a sentence, with a cap of forty thousand dollars additional money, that's what I did.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead. I move the city council authorize the award of the North Bridge paving project to legacy paving and construction, also approved in twenty twenty-five, twenty-four-six budget. In accordance with recommendation of city staff and to amend the contract according to Oregon procurement law with a cap of forty thousand dollars additional money. Okay.
First and second. Uh, any more discussion, Ian, go ahead.
Uh, we have chip seal previously, and I just wanted to quickly say, it was done very poorly and it was not done correctly, there was a step that was missed. And I know that you are not gonna let that happen and, uh, but I, because, because you did a good job. Uh, but I, but I was going to say, um, the county did West Side Road, uh, chip seal or repaving, I think. And that's outside of, uh, the backside of McMendel going up towards Carlton and Yam Hill. And I, I'm pretty sure it's a chip seal and that work was gorgeous, I took pictures of it.
Did you send pictures or?
I sent pictures, I was like, this is beautiful work, so.
Comparison to what we had, which is not beautiful.
Yeah, uh, we had, we had some trouble with the chip seal being completed correctly, I think the city was supposed to do some of the work and it just wasn't done. I don't know what happened exactly, but I would say, I'm all for chip seals, it sounds great, um, as long as we do it right.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for a vote then, uh, all in favor? Okay, uh, opposed? Uh, abstained? Lucy, are you doing one of those?
Already did the except.
Oh, you did, okay, gotcha, I'm sorry, I missed it, okay, I missed it, sorry, okay, so that's Ian, okay. Sorry, okay. Um, so next then we have the addendum, um, to Sewer Main Project, I believe, that's what's next.
Yeah, your honor, and this was a lot like, a couple of, of, uh, action items you've already talked about tonight, you know, adding on to existing work. And, uh, you might recall, uh, awarding the sewer lining last, uh, in, in your September meeting. Uh, and, uh, we were, uh, commenting at, uh, what a good price it was. So that work is nearly complete now and while the contractor is there, onsite, ready to go. We've got an addendum here to do, uh, quite a bit more, uh, lining. And, and you can see it itemized there, but again, it's, you know, fifty thousand, six twenty-five, it's work that the city's gonna have to do. One way or the other, coming up, whether you line it or you replace the pipe. Uh, uh, and you've got a great price here, these folks are willing to do it, uh, on the same on mobilization. Uh, so this doesn't have anything to do with the prior work, only additional work. Because they're there, they do three hundred and ninety linear feet, they want to do one hundred and thirty-eight additional feet plus three manholes. Uh, and it, 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 it also, it doesn't talk about, you know, cleaning out the pipe and getting rid of the ruts and getting, you know, preparing everything. You know, that's all part of it, uh, so, again, this is a good price to take advantage of. It really is, and we can get, uh, the numbers, uh, to back up just a bit, the, the, the numbers we hope to get in the spring. It shows we have less out of compliance days in our wastewater treatment plant because we have less water flowing. Uh, I think we can attribute that to this project. Uh, and, uh, this extends it west, another hundred and thirty-eight feet plus three manholes, uh, those numbers are gonna be even better, I think, in the spring. Uh, so, uh, any, uh, any other questions on that?
Yeah, I was thinking, it sounds very reasonable based on the locality, the budget of a hundred and seventy-five thousand that we approved at this. And this project will only put that up to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand and it will cover a lot more feet of, uh, pipe and the three manholes. And if, uh, winter coming, it will work, rainwater potentially making through the manholes, getting into our, uh, system. I think this is a, a good project, that's my, that's just one opinion.
Time is of the essence, uh, they want to get in there and install this new lining, uh, beginning next Monday. Uh, while their window of opportunity is there to get this done.
Okay, good, Jim.
I move to approve, uh, addendum number one to the West Coast CIP P to, in the amount of fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. For additional sewer collection system repairs and authorize the city manager to execute the change order. I'm gonna add just a little bit, has defined in this staff report, did you define it in there? I think that you, uh, seconded it, okay.
Any discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote then, all in favor? Okay, that's Ian. Okay, uh, we're all done with action items. Okay, so we're moving on now to, uh, department reports. Uh, let's take the first one is Public Works, uh, on page, uh, eight, three.
Yeah, I have eight more questions.
Yeah.
The managers in here, they have reverted to winter operating hours resulting in reduced overtime, reducing overtime is good. Um, what does that mean though, uh, reverting to winter, what are their winter operating hours versus summer operating hours, we know?
No, I don't know exactly, other than, uh, I, I like the idea of eliminating overtime.
Oh, yeah, getting rid of overtime, I'm taking the luxury of plenty of that, so the city has a good thing.
Well, I, there's, there's, there's seasonal things on what we have to monitor and, uh, uh. There's, there's less in water and more in wastewater as the seasons change. Uh, so I, I, I know that has a lot to do to it, but, uh, exactly what the numbers equate to in dollars, I mean, I can't find that, I don't know.
It's just interesting that you pointed it out, and that's a good thing, you know, just winter, winter versus summer hours here.
Uh, let's.
I would suspect that, that it would refer to it darker in the winter, so they can't work overtime on overtime, work later into the evening and they're working, they're not working, you know, more overtime.
Yep.
Still working the rains. What, did you hear that?
No, no, Ivan was just saying they can still work, you know?
Yeah, they can still work, if they have to, go work.
Yeah, but that, that might be the, that might be the case. Um, okay, other questions on this report, questions or comments? Uh, Jim?
At the, in, down in the sewers section, you made your reference to the liner contract, is that the one we just approved the addition for?
That's right, that's, okay, that's the contract.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, well, um, there's no other questions, we can move on.
One last thing, I'd like to pass on to Kai, um, the pictures are great. And I figured out what one of ones, um, don't know whether that little caption with this picture frequently enough.
Okay, Ian, go ahead.
The two on the left are both the ground part, that's just.
I knew the one wasn't done for sure, yeah, I couldn't, it's hard.
You can see, uh, predictions are right, it's a matter of time.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so next then the library report. Ian, oh, Jim?
Uh, I had the opportunity to, uh, to talk to Flynn and, uh, I told her to her face that these numbers she keeps coming up with are outstanding. To, uh, computer usage is up and, uh, to have a number of people coming in on these programs because if you. Me personally, I'm just not a, a, a library user. And so I don't truly understand how the program works, but people that, of the, of the city obviously enjoy them and she's getting a lot of people coming in. So she's doing a fantastic job even despite the fact that budgets are limited and we're just trying to fix the things, but she is just outstanding in what she does and how she does it.
Ian, other, oh, Ian, go ahead.
It says this February, they're doing an annual decoration, decorate a pumpkin program, there's still seats available, uh, maybe I just want to say that out loud. Anyone listening, Mike?
I think they, I think they did that on Saturday.
Oh, that was this one?
Yeah, because I think it was sent.
Got it.
Last week.
Okay, go to our library anyway.
Yeah.
Can you check it out?
I just know because we were there, my daughter did her pumpkins, so that was last, uh, I think that last Saturday, but yeah. Um, okay, any other? Okay, uh, so next is the grant tracking report, um.
So, good news and good news? Yay, that we, um, our request, President signed that last week for our grant extension, goes to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And then we put in a new request for twenty twenty-six, but, phew, finally, finally, we got good news from the state of Oregon and that was all returned to the not good design. And then we are on our way to getting reimbursed on the CDVG, um, the wastewater grant, so. That they're resuming that process now that the money's been, the cups are moved and we can get, start asking for reimbursements again, so.
Um, so for those CDVG, so with, will the Yam Hill wastewater want to be closed out?
No, I believe the, the Yam Hill wastewater, there's, there's still money, you're, okay, you're talking about the CDVG, not the Yam Hill County.
Right, right, yeah, just that CD machine.
Okay, I found some in my brain, like, wait, wait a second, okay, so you're talking about Yam Hill Street one. Um, that, that still has a ways to be before it's closed out, um, and there's, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in reimbursements we're looking for, so.
I was just wondering when we could open up a new CDVG, is that something?
Oh, right, 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 no, I think there are always some closing now.
Okay, okay, Jim?
Um, this, uh, grant that we've finally got extended for after all this time. Uh, if I, as I understand, what we're trying to do is, is extensions are to allow us to finish the project so we can finally be reimbursed, is that correct?
Reimbursed, yes, yes, give us the time to finish so we can get.
Because that's a pretty, it's got six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's a lot of money to be reimbursed, okay, I got it, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments on this report? Uh, okay, then we'll move on, move on into the, uh, finding support, I think that's.
Speaking to anyone?
At the end, anyone, um? Any, um, questions or comments on this, this report?
Okay.
Go ahead.
One, uh, okay, it says the city of Sheridan was awarded a grant for twenty twenty thousand dollars, that's their transportation system plan, but. Um, ODOT is actually running that program, is that what I'm reading here?
Well, they're paying for it, uh, but it's actually through a consulting firm, uh, Kittleson is the one that's going to, uh. And their subs are the ones that will be doing the work.
Because it, you know, it's based in here, the city is not part of the contract, but we'll enter into, into an intergovernmental agreement with the ODOT, so it, it sounds like. They're taking care of it, we're just kind of, we got the grant, here, you take the money and get it done, what needs to be done, is that pretty, the easy way of thinking of that?
Well, I'm not really sure if we're gonna get the money and register it or ODOT's gonna.
Oh, we do not touch the money, that's why we don't have a contract with the subcontractor.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
They're all pre-approved on ODOT's approved list of vendors and they handle all that, they do take input from the city. I don't know what that contract looks like and William and Kai are the two main guys involved in the work.
I think there was Kai's in there, that's good.
Okay, other, uh, questions, um? Looks like, housing capacity analysis, was that, I feel like I've, was that last month's, last month's report, is this new? I mean, I know it says new, but I thought I'd seen it somewhere before, so, but either way, that's good that we, we, we have that, the grant. Um, getting all these, you know, plans passed will help us.
Well, and your honor, I may, maybe can, uh, add to the big picture of that, that, uh, this, uh, this housing analysis is a, um. Essential part to any UGV plan, you know, let's see, uh, we talked, uh, and budgeted for a building land inventory. That to take place on all developable lots in the city, uh, and, and how those existing lots could be expanded, uh, uh, with increased density. So, so the buildable lands inventory that we budgeted would basically be our local match to receive a housing analysis grant. It'll cover the entire city, uh, uh, and the UGV, so it goes beyond what we were thinking of the buildable lands inventory. It's a much bigger expansion and it's really an important precursor to updating your UGV, which we would be looking at in, in, in the matter of course. Uh, uh, in, in the next couple of years of probably the city initiating that process.
Because we need a, we need a, um, housing capacity analysis, we need our wa, we need our master plans updated. There's, there's several things for us to be able to do, like UGV expansion, and this is one of those.
Yeah, very important, and so that's great news, yeah, we've been grant, given that grant with that local match, yes.
Are, are we anticipating, I mean, it says here the original request was for approximately forty thousand dollars. Was it our intention with that question that would cover the cost of this, uh, housing capacity analysis?
That's correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, along with our local match.
Correct.
Okay, other comments on that report? All right, so the next we have the city manager report.
Uh, thank you, your honor, uh, the only thing I wanted to mention is just to kind of give me a heads up on next month, uh, uh. Next month, that's your regular meeting on the seventeenth, uh, we'll be looking at coming to council to ask for funding priorities. In terms of infrastructure and non-infrastructure. And we'll give you, you know, some items to think about and, and the reason why that's important at that time is because, uh. The city has been very fortunate to be granted an audience with the regional solutions team. And this is a, uh, if you're familiar with the, the term, uh, it's, uh, it's organized through the governor's office and, and a special. A special coordinator, which who is Beth Wachowski, uh, uh, you know, convenes of state agencies to address funding issues. Uh, for a particular entity and, uh, so, so in go, and, and, and maybe you've heard of the one stock concept, okay? Well, the regional solution teams now kind of folds all that in, not only let's get all of our heads together and figure out how to address a vital community issue. But how we're gonna fund it, it all happens at once, it's a great invitation for the city. It's coming up in a few months, I don't have the date yet, so in preparation for that, uh, I need to know, to go into that meeting, to know from council, your funding priority. And I'll give you a short list of non-infrastructure and then infrastructure, and you can be thinking about things. Uh but uh you know, they like to fund things that make a big difference, that are you know, they help achieve compliance in different areas. Uh so there's uh there's various criteria uh of that, but uh we'll be looking at getting council's input on those funding priorities on the seventeenth.
That would probably be good too, um that we kind of have an idea for um you know, the legislative session opens up. Um it's a the short session, but if if we can, you know, if there's whatever that pro- top project is, we can also um you know, working with the COG, the Laura, figure out you know, the the best way to to pitch that, um I mean, I know last time I was, you know, Sheridan Road, it might be Sheridan Road again, but um that would probably be a good good opportunity for us to um look at and say, okay, what's the top project and then where can we um go as far as asking the state?
Yes, this this uh this state regional solutions team is a great first step, and that can help define how you proceed with certain projects. Uh and and it's good you mentioned Sheridan Road, uh that's not a good project for this, and I'll tell you why. Uh because Sheridan Road is not on our master plan, so so what will be on the funding list for you?
It's not Sheridan.
I'm always given this, yeah.
I didn't press it until the same thing last year.
Did you hear it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were all thinking that though, that's yeah, yeah, yeah.
She's fine, I'm fine.
Uh so, so back, so what I'll bring to you is say the water line project in Sheridan Road, the sewer line project in Sheridan, but not the road itself, not the street, cuz it's not in our master plan. Uh uh so though what we're gonna cover some important elements of that.
Yep.
Uh uh and uh so you may revisit, you know, uh your favorite projects. Uh uh and uh and they're gonna wanna help our community fund essential projects for a community that's in distress. So you keep that in mind, and 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 I can take your priorities to that meeting, and I think something great can happen, it really can. This is a wonderful opportunity, we need our ducks in a row, uh uh Kale and I have a very wonderful opportunity to meet with Beth Watauski, another colleague of mine uh uh who has set up this uh this meeting, to have their team come to Sheridan, um it's a great opportunity.
Okay, Ian?
How did this opportunity go about? Uh well, uh I think it's uh being in the right place at the right time, Kale and I meeting with Beth Watauski, who's a former colleague of mine. And uh and discussing the needs of the community, and was actually uh in regards to another project entirely, but uh so it's funny how all that works, but uh uh Beth is very in tune with helping communities in need. Thank you both for bringing that to the council and the city.
Um okay, uh Lucy?
So in this meeting, is it possible to twist and turn the whole um object of FEMA? Speaking of a distressed city and there's gotta be some, like what you and I have discussed in regards to, there's got to be something that can be done, the obstacles they put on development in the downtown area and their existing buildings.
I don't know if you're gonna wanna tackle the federal government.
Well, it's a thought that could fall under the.
We're distressed, that's what's causing us so much distress is the government, so you know, I mean, I'm just wondering if that's a possibility with your gentle conversations.
Probably not, uh I I I've got it under a list of ten minute projects that are non-infrastructure, but uh I I just I just can't. I don't think it's a good project.
Well, I can make sure Beth knows another another way maybe not on that meeting, but I can mention it to her. Just that, just to make her aware, cuz it is what we're doing.
That would be. It's a very important initiative that we're doing that doesn't quite fit with the bricks and mortar that they wanna.
If I don't ask, then shame on me, so you know what I mean?
Great question.
Thank you very much, Justin, thank you so much.
Okay, um anything else on your report?
That's it, your honor.
Okay, uh we'll go ahead and move on to um the mayor and council's reports, but there's usually concerns, uh so um Ian, you can go first.
Uh I don't know who sourced this uh sheriff's report, but it looks great, so thank you for including that.
That would be Whitlow that brings those for us, yes.
Alright, my only suggestion would be that we transfer these percentages over to these things, cuz there's too many covers.
I agree, I couldn't tell all the greens.
And I'm not covered.
Yeah, and I am, so that's a, you know, how much I can take.
And then I have a, I'm understanding that that you included this person, the the vehicle as well, the technical, and I and I appreciate correct that you didn't have to, but you did, thank you.
Well, that's I I think that's uh that's to keep council informed, you know, without the surplus, we won't buy the new vehicle, see, yeah, yeah.
Great, uh others? Jim? I think, um I was at the Virginia Garcia, the their open house, uh I get sort of open house kind of grant, I think, uh last week. Uh last Thursday, uh they asked me to give a speech, which I was like, okay, uh but uh yeah, so I talked at that and then I got an opportunity to to look at their their new the the facility and then also their um their van that they that they take to different places. Um and so that was, that was good, um I'm I'm happy that we have a doctor's office again, uh but but the other thing that I was uh happy to hear is, you know, they're gonna I think they they told us they're gonna be offering dental, but they're also gonna be doing uh behavioral health there too. Um so that's um I don't I don't know if we've ever had a behavioral health, any type of office like that here in town, of course, I think that's that's huge, so. Okay, uh Lucy, did you have?
Um we're at your council concerns.
Yeah.
So officially after hearing Kai's report, is that South Side Park open, just gonna be driving out there? Sounds like I think you already resolved, cuz I think that was one of the lacking reasons why they weren't open for, is it open now then?
I mean. Uh I uh was talking to Jim about that before the meeting.
Yeah, Kate Kate did write out, or he's not opening for science as a volunteer.
They said they're gonna be open for like November fifth.
November.
Oh, November.
Oh, it had the fifth on there, oh, it did have a fifth.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was originally on the third, but they pushed it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, oh sorry, Jim, you already said no.
Oh, this is, I'm I'm cutting on to what uh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, forgot your name, anyway, uh the Virginia Garcia clinic, because of the federal government shutdown, right now is not taking Medicare and Medicaid. But if you're already going to the clinic in Mc Wendell, you can continue to go there and they are set up to do that. As soon as things start to work normally again, then they will get their system set up and then people will be able to go there and Medicaid and Medicare, I think that's important.
Uh Ivan, did you have something?
I I was wondering, I I was trying to look around here, does it say the actual date that they open?
Well, yeah, I think they opened that Monday, even though they had like the the um ribbon cutting and all that on a Thursday, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday that they officially opened, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Oh. Great, thank you.
Ian, you have something?
I was just gonna say, could you remind uh maybe me and Republic, is that the one on Jefferson that's the clinic there?
Yeah.
So if people are looking for healthcare, they can head on down to.
Yeah, and.
They're running their dogs in the dog park or.
Yeah, yeah, and then since um uh since they don't have a lot of like, since since they're new, they they don't have like established plans, so a lot of times it sounds like you you would be able to walk in and most likely, you know, be seen.
Oh.
Uh you would have to give a point, but, yes.
Who knows if they have the, they're gonna have their mobile vehicle there, they mentioned that, right?
Oh, uh I'm not, I'm not I'm not sure where where that's gonna be, I know it was there, but I know they've it's, you know, around different places, and I know it's been like at the high school for like, you know, the the sports physicals, things like that. I'm not sure if it's gonna be there.
Okay.
Um, okay, um, li- uh sorry, Lucy?
Liz, does someone stand their hand up, or is that just?
No.
No, it's the.
Okay, so then.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I I don't know if everybody is kind of familiar, and I know you are Preston, by the way, I've been driving by three twenty Sheridan Road, I don't see any lights on in there, that's where you have the um houses on stilts.
Oh, oh wow.
And there was a confrontation with the sheriff's down there, and the basic thread of that with the neighbors in that area is that people are living in homes that should not be occupied. And either they've had some kind of major construction, bottom line, they're not fit to live in, people are living in them, people are living in them and they're dealing drugs. And by the way, like I said again, Preston did a really good job on combating a huge conflict in the neighborhood that I could understand, but I've even kind of been driving by because I haven't heard, but I believe that you deserve the respect of being known, that I haven't seen any lights on. So thank you for that, one one down, I saw somebody this weekend, they gave me a couple more homes that they saw are not fit to be lived in. And there is very suspicious behavior going on, and yet somebody else mentioned when they had a fire or something, they had to go in and get their permits and get it fixed, and then they had to go back in and apply for an owner occupancy permit before they could actually move back into their home, and so my question is to the council is, or the planner, whatever, and you too Preston, but this is not a criticism, this is a question. Is that there are two more homes that are currently being used to um do, um I'm not sure, let me just put it this way, they're not habitable to be living in. And yet people are in there and they shouldn't be living in there until they get the houses repaired, whether they're on stilts or they've had fire damage. Because we all know you can't live in a fire damaged home, and especially with extracurricular activities going on, it just kind of draws to it. And I do have a couple addresses that I can give to you that, and I am familiar with both of them, where um you know, and I know the police is the police or whatever, you know, our officers, hands are tied under certain laws that people come up with that are crazy stupid, but that's besides the point. I'm trying to think of a way to help these people out who have dire concerns, and is it not possible for homes that have known destruction to I'm gonna fix it, I'm gonna fix it, but that's okay, you you don't have to fix it right now, but you can't be living in it either or letting someone else live in it to keep people out of it that are trying to see possibly bad behavior, but if there was an owner occupancy permit that needed to be reinstated, it would almost help everybody in the neighborhood knowing that kind of like the work that you did, Preston, that there's nobody there now and there won't be anybody there there until they get the repairs completed, which is what should be done in the first place. And I'm wondering if those things need to be brought to the attention of uh to who? Because it's it's a concern, and as of course it rains and gets colder, there's a few more, you know, bats in the belfry uh to to hide out. And instead of waiting for a problem to get so big that it's out of control, I believe in snuffing it up before it gets too big. That there is, you know, activity is not acceptable, and I kind of, you know, God bless Preston, you know, he's our code enforcer right now. And I'm sure he's got better things to do with his time, but at the same time, I feel it's our job to help you try to figure out a way to get through it so you can go on to more pressing things. But this is probably gonna be happening a little bit more, I had somebody pull me over for three hours, and I took the code enforcement for you. But I tried to refuse that as much as I could, I tried to remember what I was taught by you about the police, proper channels to use, but then when it comes down to this item of people living there without even maybe consent or very familiar to the situation that you and I were talking about, except possibly burnt houses, which I think is, you know, not a safe place anyway, to find a way to work together to get these situations taken care of. And I'm not sure what the right venue is other than um to drive by and monitor those house, but people do see activity versus putting a stop to it like you did on that particular house. And you did a good job as far as I can see, I'll probably drive by and get some of that before I go home.
Well, we are uh in the process of hiring the code compliance officer. Uh and uh so uh if people need to report that, yes, they can report it at City Hall. Uh right now, I'm taking all that stuff. Uh the council has staff to implement the ordinances. Uh so all of those examples you give, uh I I would say it depends.
Yeah.
People living in a certain place, well, that depends, it depends on who's living there and why. Uh it's not just you got a bad building, you can't live, it doesn't work that way. Because you can have people living in a house with no water, no sewer, and a dirt floors, and they're just fine, it so it all depends. And that's what your staff does, is determine who can be in there and who can't. Uh with the case on Sheridan Road, that was a building permit issue, uh no occupancy until that gets done. So so I had to utilize law enforcement too, to en- to enforce that. Uh uh other situations could be entirely different, but that's staff's uh 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 job is to apply the law. And uh I don't have a lot of time right now, uh uh but that's, I can't tell you, you can't just, you know, it's people just can't live in a house that don't look good or something, no, it doesn't work that way.
It 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 would be more of a, like you said, the building permit, there's a building permits that need to be required.
Well, that was, right, that was that case in that house, I've had other cases, I've had uh, you know, a a burned out home uh uh that needs to get fixed. A lot of it comes down to having a responsible owner, and uh sometimes you don't have responsible owners. But in most cases, the owners want to be responsible, uh or they they attract liability onto themselves. So uh working with an owner is uh usually uh important to uh to abate my success. Uh but it really is depending on the circumstances.
Ivan, do you have one?
But I would also add, if there is suspicious extracurricular activity, that is no staff in this building is going to approach that home. Period, uh somebody calls us and says, oh, they're dealing drugs or blah blah, but you need to call YCOM.
And and you can do that even if the house wasn't good?
Yes, yeah, and they're all.
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to.
Call YCOM, yes, that's a law enforcement job.
Well, that's a weird thing. You know, I'll still talk to folks and hear out their concern, but ultimately for a long while, their concern.
Yes, they need to call YCOM for suspicious activity.
I'm not gonna get involved in 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 uh the process of law enforcement. Uh I'll have my opinions and priorities and I have my communication needs, uh but I'm not gonna tell the cops how to do their job. But I, but it's my job to hold them accountable to the services in this community, and right now that includes code enforcement. Uh uh cuz they're helping pick up the slack in that area. So I'll I'd be happy to talk to folks on all law enforcement concerns, that's how I found out about the one, you know, but uh ultimately, yeah, we're gonna rely on the sheriff's office.
Ian, you?
This portion portion is over.
Okay, first, second, third, all the paper. Alright, I think that's the end, alright, we're adjourned, it's nine twenty-nine.
Preston, do you know what my resume name is?
Do you want this, Sharon?
Sure.
You're you're not.
There's a.
Oh, it's at nine on Wednesday.
Okay. Graphics in there?
Yeah, and I think you have to sign up, so I can send you the.
I don't think, I don't know if there's anything in there that wasn't handed out, but it's it's good, the the Chevy, I'm interested in that they.
Just let me know which one, I mean, I have.
Okay. Looks like they might be seeing it online, I guess. Okay. I'll send you. Okay. I love how they they we got.
Okay, I can send you that.
Yeah, that's my normal.
Yeah, this is what we're buying, so then.
And then I'd like to just sit and listen.
Okay, cool. You know? Cool.
You know about how long that might run?
I think it was an hour maybe.